Also realizing that I know Ms. Reber is on, I think Mr. Drosen was on. We might not have all of the principals because we're starting a little earlier and we did excuse them for this. So we will move right into that and I would like to call to order the meeting of the Lewisburg area Board of School Directors. Again, if you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. A few announcements for our regular board meeting. Again, we do have all board members present. We did meet an executive session prior to our public work session this evening for approximately 30 minutes to discuss three personnel matters. And we also held the public work session this evening for approximately one hour to discuss the creation of the education committee. That's all that I have this evening. We'll move on. John, any citizens comments to the board on agenda items?
No, we do not currently have any citizens comments to the boards on agenda items. For those of you listening along at home, if you do have a comment that you would like shared with the board, please visit our website at www.lasd.us. Scroll down the main page, find the survey link and complete the survey and we'll read your comments to the board later on in the meeting. Back to you, Mr. Fetter.
All right. Thanks, John. We'll move on to board representatives comments. Again, as I stated, I might have thrown a little curve ball as we started a little earlier, but I do have a couple of the principals on. So Ms. Reber, I'll start with you.
All right. Thank you very much. It was very interesting just to listen to everything about the proposed committee and the makeup and your very thoughtful conversations about that. That was just, you know, it was very interesting, as I said, just to listen in on that. And thank you for that opportunity to do that. So this week, we finally, because winter weather has not cooperated at all, we've finally been able to get our keystones up and running. So we have completed the Keystone algebra. We have also are halfway now through the Keystone biology testing and we'll finish that tomorrow. And then next Monday and Tuesday, we'll do the Keystone literature. And so far, attendance for these have been fantastic. Been a little bit of a challenge this year to think logistically of how we're going to do them, just because of the spaces that we have available and making sure that we're socially distanced and, you know, that we're not, you know, that we have enough proctors to administer because this year is we're doing the semester block schedule. There just have been some nuances to the testing that haven't been there before. So and then after we finish, the state has made the window longer this year. So once we finish getting all of the in-person done, then we will be setting up times for our students that would be in those courses from the fall and first part of winter that are in cyber or e-school to come in and take them. We did not want to make them a part of our, of the overall and a larger testing group with the in-person, knowing that some people, you know, are very concerned about coming in into the building and again, keeping those class sizes small. So we're going to try to do those and give them some options of some times to come in where it will be very, you know, very small grouped. And so that hopefully that will alleviate some of those concerns. I had the pleasure of meeting with student council yesterday. And yeah, that's one of the things this year that has been really hard is not having our, our clubs and activities. That's such a wonderful part of our day to really be able to go and informally see those students, no matter what club they're in, being able to really passion. So our student council has been meeting on Wednesday afternoons via Zoom. And actually, going back to Dr. Zimmerman had talked about board representatives. That was actually one of my areas that I brought up with the students. I think there was some misconception on the students' part that, that there was not an interest from the board perspective. And I think that that just, they just needed some clarification. And, you know, I kind of took them back through the history a little bit of when we did have students regularly on and also talked about what changes we could make in terms of, I know that it's difficult for it just to be one student that attends all of them because our kids are so actively involved, but ways that we could, you know, make that an offshoot of student council even and even get some students who may not be involved in student council or that doesn't want to be involved in this student, student council, but is still interested about those issues. And, you know, as we talked, you know, one of the things I pointed out that, you know, too often, you know, the focus is on, you know, kind of nationally on politics and, and, but really the most impact often that you have comes from those local elections and learning, especially like at a board meeting and how valuable that is, which I found out I, they had just learned about that in AP government. So I was, it was nice to know that they approved of what I was saying and it matched what Mr. Britton was saying. But I think there is a lot of option or a lot of opportunity there. And I think I didn't get a chance because today, or yesterday, rather, they were going into their breakout sessions afterwards. And that was going to be one of the things that they talked about. In addition, I talked with them just in, you know, near future as we start to look at the course selection guide and we're in a very different type of environment as we were last year, that I would love their perspective and their ideas and how to best present the information and kind of, you know, for instance, as a junior, what I know now that I wish I had known as a freshman. I think sometimes they gravitate and just, you know, yes, the adults saying things are important to them, but sometimes it's hearing from their fellow peers and their experiences gives that a little bit more credibility. And we also talked about making sure, you know, we've had several students that came back at midsemester or at mid-year, rather, at the semester change, that as we are looking at next year, you know, how can we make sure that our current e-schoolers still have that, that personalized attention? And, I mean, we have a couple of kids on student council who just returned from e-school. And so, you know, they were very much on board with that, but just a great overall discussion with them. Yesterday, Mrs. Osborne's Business Management and Entrepreneur Class, they were checking out the new UV printer that the Green Dragon Foundation bought. We got our training on it here. We had two sessions this fall with our teachers. And so they had an opportunity to look at some of the products that has been created by staff since then to get ideas of really different and unique things that they can market and sell in the school store. Again, what I loved about this printer is the opportunities for different curricular areas to be involved with it, whether it's from, you know, your, your technology education with the actual construction of it, whether it's the business of it, whether you're looking at, you know, fundraising opportunities that exist. There are so many opportunities, but they got a chance to see some of the things. And Mrs. Gemberling, our aide in the media center, she has just been instrumental in learning the program, trying different things out. She is truly a jack of all trades and we wonder what she can't do. But this is a woman that is just as comfortable with a saw as she is a book as she is with a computer. So kids saw examples of mugs and puzzles and layups and personalized golf balls. And so I think it really started to kind of spur that, that creative thinking. And I am so excited to see just the possibilities when we are able to kind of get back more of that club. And, you know, obviously we have to limit, you know, how many students are in the school store and things like that and have to be more cautious with those types of things. And we don't have during the day where students can go to it as we had in the past. But again, just the possibilities, it's really exciting. So that's what I have this evening and I'll be talking to you in a little bit later about AP Capstone. And I don't know if Mr. Wetzel is on yet, so I'm going to go ahead. And Mr. Drosen, are you here?
I am here.
All right. Tag, you're it.
Very great. Thank you. I enjoyed listening to Ms. Reber's presentation and primarily about clubs and activities. It's always been such a big part of the middle school experience and it's something that's sorely lacking this year. But every now and then we have those glimpses, those flashes of, you know, what middle school is supposed to be. So yesterday was one of those days, one of those times while right after school, we had our yearbook club meeting as they're in the unique challenge of trying to fill pages when there's less than usual amounts of fun things going on to put into a yearbook. So they're, they are meeting after school and the band teachers, orchestra teacher, music teachers asked me to help them brainstorm how we might be able to have some sort of concerts in the spring. So we're walking around, looking at outside venues that are now snow covered that won't be when it comes time in June to perhaps, you know, cycle parents through like we do it at sporting events. And so we're doing that. Then the, our athletics finished up for the season, the winter season and basketball teams were playing at home. So I wandered down to the gym and we have the kids playing seventh, eighth and ninth grade basketball. And then some of the kids from the yearbook club come in with their cameras to take pictures of that. And all while this is going on, then our math counts team is participating online. They're all logging in and participating in a, in an invitational tournament and all that. And it was like, there's so much stuff going on today and I may go a week or longer before another day like this or with so many different activities for the kids other than just classroom things. And so every now and then there's that flash. And so we have been talking, as I mentioned, with the music teachers, but also with other teachers and groups and organizations about how we might be able to salvage some of their end of the year activities at the end of the year, not knowing today what things are going to look like at the end of May or in June, and to see if some of those, if we can be creative and bring some of those end of the year activities back into the school for the kids to experience. Like the high school, our Keystone exams finished up today. It brings a whole nother set of challenges for the spring with PSSAs. And knowing that we're, there are some choices to be made with how the PSSAs are administered in the spring. But we've started those conversations with the faculty to figure out what we think is going to be best for the kids and best for the community at the same time. So that's what we have going on at the middle school. And I know that Mr. Rule, I saw him checked in in the meeting, so I will turn it over to Mr. Rule.
Thank you, Mr. Drosen. Good evening, everyone. We're so happy to be back in school and have a full week of, of school going forward. Kind of feeling a little more normal during this week. So we hope the weather continues to cooperate so that we can remain in school and don't get too many more of these weather days. Some really great things have been going on and being planned going forward for our students. You know, we, we've had to change a lot of our procedures and, you know, because of the pandemic, but we wanted to continue to work with organizations like the PSA to be able to continue some traditions that we've had before. So usually about this time of the school year, we do something called a book swap where students are able to bring in books from home and be able to trade those in and, and look through books that were brought in from other students and, you know, pick out some new books for them to be able to take home. And so with our, the help of our PSA, we've got a process where, you know, our, our PSA volunteers are going to go around classroom to classroom and collect the books in the morning over a couple of days so students can bring those in. But by going around and doing that, it eliminates the need for the kids to sort of come down and wait in a line and mix together between different classes in the library to drop those off. And then we're going to let the books sit for a few days and the PSA volunteers are going to organize them out on the tables and students are going to come down one class at a time and do sort of a visual search of the books to see what books they might be interested in. Maybe it's a series that they've read before, or maybe it's just a topic that they're interested in. And then they'll be able to pick out some books to be able to take home. But we're trying to keep it as much as we can as a no-touch kind of process with the books so we can keep them clean. And then the PSA volunteers will turn around and put out new books out on display for other students to be able to come and enjoy. One of the other really nice things about this is we were able to set up a time for e-school students to participate in this. So their parents are able to drop off books within the window and then we've got afternoon times on, on a Wednesday early dismissal day for the e-school students to be able to come in. Going along with that, Bucknell frequently reaches out to us with opportunities to have guest readers. And Maisha Kelly from the athletic office had reached out during Black History Month and was interested in having athletes, Bucknell athletes from a variety of teams be able to read to our students. So throughout the month of February and then concluding a little bit into next week with some rescheduled times, we've been able to have every classroom have a guest reader. Our librarian, Mrs. Hornberger, was able to go through and pick out the books for the Bucknell students to be able to read. So we would have a developmentally age-appropriate book for each of the classrooms. And then it's also great because if the kids have an interest in reading the book, again, they can check it out from the library at a later time. So again, all of our classes were able to participate as well as our e-school classes as well. So it's wonderful that they've been able to participate. The other thing that I would share is that Midnight Maze, which normally happens right, but Mr. Fetter will remember that, that which usually happens right before the December break, we did, we did not hold that this year because we were going back and forth to remote instruction. Our phys ed teachers decided they wanted to work together and create a March Madness maze. So in sort of conjunction with a basketball March Madness that goes on. So the first couple of weeks, two, two and a half weeks of March, we are going to be doing Midnight Maze. Midnight Maze, for those of you that don't know, is kind of like a, the lights are turned down in the gym. There's sort of a, a course that's made out of, of mats and other kinds of things. And it's normally a tag game. But of course, they're going to use foam noodles now instead of the kids tagging each other with their hands to help promote social distancing. And the other thing that I, I learned was that our e-school teachers were, were working with the phys ed teachers and for any of our e-school families that are comfortable, we're inviting them to come in and participate in Midnight Maze as well. So again, I'm really thankful that all of our teachers and staff are also keeping those e-school students in our minds and, and connected with us. Several of our specials teachers jump into e-school meetings during the course of the month to stay connected with the kids. I was actually invited to Mrs. Madica, this is first grade e-school class last Friday and was able to join in and spend some time with the kids, which is, which was an awful lot of fun. The last thing I'll share with you is a little story. I was able to do a teacher observation this week and teacher had a really creative lesson. She wanted to talk to the kids about their remote learning experiences this year, but compare it to back in the 1920s when kids were also out of school because of a polio epidemic. And she found a really interesting story in the Chicago area about how teachers got on the public radio and did remote learning to kids through the radio. And it talked about how they learned back in those times. And the teacher did this interesting compare and contrast with the kids to think about their experiences now and what the, the experiences of the kids were in the 1920s. And then she had them do a writing activity and kind of think like, if you had to write a letter for kids in the future to describe sort of what this was like, what would that be like? And so the kids went through and they were sort of, they worked through a graphic organizer and brainstormed some ideas. And of course, they identified things like, you know, we have death shields and we have masks and, you know, we, we eat in our classroom and some of those kinds of things. But the thing that really touched me and made me really just kind of reflect on, I was reading one girl's note. She said, we can't hug anymore. And, you know, just, you know, thinking about that through the eyes of a young student who they're so affectionate at this age with their classmates, their teachers, and just for her to recognize that that's something that she misses. And so I was talking to her and I said, I miss those two. And, and hopefully real soon, maybe even next year, we can go back to giving each other hugs and, and be able to do that again. And she had a smile with that. But I just thought that was a really great example of our teachers kind of getting creative and getting the kids to also express some of their feelings about learning remotely and, and learning even in the classroom in these remote times, but to also reflect that this isn't something new, the kids have done this before and that our kids can be successful with this process as well. So that's what I had today. I don't know if Mr. Wetzel was able to join us. If he's not here, I guess I'll turn it back over to Mr. Fetter.
Thanks everyone for all the updates. Lots of great stuff happening. At this point in the meeting, we'll move on to the select presentations. Dr. Fairchild, I'll turn it over to you for the long range financial plan.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fetter. Yes. So every other year, we go through the long-range financial plan. And it just takes a quick, high-level look at how things would look in the upcoming five years. So moving through here, I'll go through some assumptions that we used and then we'll take a high-level look at our revenues and our expenditures, as well as the fund balance projections, our long-term debt, as well as our upcoming capital projects as well. Again, this is forecasting the future and just as the weather forecasters have a problem with a week out, this is not an exact science. So five years from now, these numbers are not written in stone. We do use assumptions. We do assume. We use our existing contracts as well as our previous year's spending and trending analyses. And just remember that as further, as you go out further in time, our projections become less certain in the out years. So on some of the assumptions that we use on the revenue side, our property taxes are capped by the Act One index and those are projected for future years at a five-year rolling average. Other taxes, such as earned income, are estimated at 1% per year. And other local revenues are held flat due to history or their variable nature. On the state revenue side, about a quarter of our revenues, our state subsidies forecasted at a very conservative quarter of a percent growth. Transportation reimbursement is held at 4%, which is similar to the growth in our transportation costs. Another state revenues held flat as well as our federal revenues, which represent a very small portion of our budget. On the expenditure side, we are a people-based industry. So we use salary and wage increases from our current agreements. And then beyond those current agreements, we use an estimate of 2% per year. Again, it is all subject to change in the out years. On the benefits side, health insurance and Peasars, we use the rates that are provided by Peasars actuaries and 10% estimates for health insurance and other benefits increasing at two and a half percent per year. You can see the other assumptions that we make on the various expenditure side that we have, as I mentioned before, 4% roughly for our transportation costs increased. And our other services do include not only student transportation, but staff travel and student placement outside of Lewisburg School District buildings. So with that, very high level, you can see a moderate growth here in our revenue over a five-year period. And again, the main takeaway is that our main engine of growth on the revenue side for our school district is local. We do continue to depend on our local taxpayers for our great quality education. On the expenditure side, and there's a lot of detail here, this is available on our board docs website. So you can go back and take a look after our meeting. You can see the growth of our expenditures here. Again, we're a people-based industry. So salaries and benefits represent 70% and growing of our expenditures. Our fund balance projection, there is a little bit of red here, but again, this is not written in stone. This is if we left things on autopilot for the next five years, which we're not going to do. We will work to carefully manage both our budget and our actuels, ensuring that we have the best programs available at the best value. Something that is new this year that I wanted to bring to the board's attention is in Governor Wolf's proposed budget for the upcoming year, he has proposed an increase to the state minimum wage. Now, I know that that proposal has met with some opposition from the Republican-controlled legislature, but I did just a quick analysis of what it would look like if we followed the governor, if the governor's proposed schedule were implemented, what we would be looking at compared to our current salary growth rate if we implemented $12 per hour in '21, '22, followed by the governor's proposal of an increase of 50 cents per hour per year, all the way up to $15 an hour. As you can see, it would create a pretty good-sized growth. Starting in '21, '22, we would see an additional $44,000 of costs growing up to the end there of '26, '27, of over $113,000 of additional costs if the minimum wage were increased. So you can see that change would have a significant impact on the finances of the school district. Turning now to our debt capacity, we are currently working on paying down our debts. As you can see right now, the, in the upcoming year, we've, our remaining debt capacity is at about 60%. And by the end of the five years out, we're up to almost three quarters. So we continue to pay down our debt and we make good inroads there. And finally, some long-term capital projects that I've been working with Mr. Gallegos to make sure that we keep our facilities nice and up to date for our students and our staff. So again, these are some of the upcoming projects that we're looking at. And then related to that is our capital project fund balance. We continue to hope to make transfers each year to keep up with these expenditures, to keep our facilities nice so that learning can take place. So in summary, we will continue to carefully monitor our fiscal situation and make sure we're making the best decisions for the district. We do conservatively budget on an annual basis and we do take it year to year. As I mentioned, unfortunately, we have increased dependence on our local taxpayers as we continue to wait for increased funding from the Commonwealth. We still rely on local taxpayers for almost three quarters of our budget. But overall, we still continue to place emphasis on the best programs and facilities for world-class education for our students. So with that, I'll open it up and ask if there are any questions. Okay. Hearing none.
We'll move on then to the AP Capstone program. Ms. Reber, I'll turn it back to you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So is everybody seeing the PowerPoint up on the screen?
Yep.
I'm making sure that we were sharing correctly. All right. So I am very excited to talk about this. And I have to say, the more that I read and research and then, you know, talk about it, just the more excited I get about this. I think that there are so many wonderful opportunities that this could bring to Lewisburg High School. So I am very happy that Dr. Polichok, you know, is endorsing this and is giving me some time tonight to present this to you. So again, we're going to be talking about the AP Capstone diploma program. And so first, when we talk about what is AP Capstone, so it's And so first, when we talk about what is AP Capstone, so it's, it's Advanced Placement or College Board's Diploma Program. And really, it came out of, I think, their need to create more of an international baccalaureate schools type approach, so that shares some of the similar philosophies and goals. So as we're looking at higher-order thinking and tying things together and not just being isolated content, but more lifelong skills, again, particularly higher-order skill, thinking skills, that's really the, the piece of this that makes it very comparable to, to an IB school program and really fits into what we want in terms, not only of rigor, but, but other goals that we have as well, which I'll talk about in a little bit. This program is initially launched in the fall of 2014. It's up to about 2,000 schools worldwide and that is just continuing to grow. So in locally, Berwick is the only place any, within, I think, BLASTS and our IU that, that have this. But you're starting to really see it starting to grow in, as, as programs often do or when they're implemented from some, some more suburban or urban areas and kind of growing out. And so we're starting to see some other districts in this area look at it also. And the overall goal is to make current AP courses a more cohesive program by adding these two AP diploma courses, which we'll talk about here momentarily. So why AP Capstone? So first of all, I mentioned about, you know, the rigor that it provides, so that our students are successful in, you know, a society that is so global and constantly changing. And so the, the skills that it focuses on, again, notice I'm saying skills because that's a big difference. These two courses are not content-oriented, they're skills-oriented, of really under, of teaching students how to question and explore, understand and analyze, evaluate multiple perspectives, synthesize ideas, and also to team and transform and transmit that. It also helps us meet, you know, our graduation pathways as we're looking at, you know, revamping that and making it more in line to be, you know, with the future readiness and pathways to graduation. It really dovetails nicely with those skills that we have for students going forward. I want to show you just a brief clip. This is actually from College Board's website and this, it is from the initial, when they first launched it. So some of the numbers, like how many students are currently participating are, are a bit dated, but I think the overall summary of the program captures it very well. So it's just a real short, three-minute summary.
AP Capstone is an innovative program for high school students designed in partnership with college faculty, built on two new courses from the Advanced Placement Program. AP Capstone challenges students to select their own topics of study. In AP Seminar, students learn to evaluate the strength of an argument, pose solutions, collaborate, and communicate. In AP Research, students design, plan, and conduct a year-long investigation on a topic they choose. Both courses foster collaboration, research, and analytical writing.
Within AP Capstone, the seminar course is innovative for its flexibility. The research program has a similar focus of flexibility and innovation that we find attractive. Instructors and their students can choose the topic they're going to focus on. It has to be interdisciplinary, it has to be engaging, it has to be pressing.
The AP Capstone program is, I think, one of the most exciting innovations a college board has ever come up with. And it's primarily because the teaching focus is shifted from content to skills. That is a paradigm shift.
The AP Capstone program was implemented in fall 2014 in 114 schools in the United States and in 22 schools throughout Canada, Europe, and Asia. The number of schools and students participating in the program are both expected to grow rapidly. Diversity in classes is fundamental to AP Capstone.
I see so much growth in the students over the year with writing and learning how to, not just synthesize information, which is so critical, but also to draw conclusions and solutions and think about problems in the world around them. They also learn to work in teams and collaborate with each other, which is a critical skill in today's society.
I was sitting here, listening to our students in some of the presentations, and I wasn't seeing 16- to 17-year-old high school students. I was seeing 20- to 21-year-old college students sitting here, going through some of these topics that range anywhere from East and Asia, the human trafficking, pop culture. Their intellectual maturity over the few months that we've had the program is outstanding.
The AP Capstone classes really help students develop the ability to do inquiry, to learn about gathering information, what information to trust, or how to put that information in context, how to form an argument based on the data and the evidence and the information that they've got, and then how to communicate it.
AP Capstone exams are validated by an external team of expert faculty from high schools and colleges.
The external validation associated with AP and AP Capstone does is it gives us a national standard. And for people like me that work in admissions and enrollment at selective universities, that in itself is of huge value. So we trust what we see.
Well, AP Capstone program, I think, is very unique. It's a broad program that gives skills that we think are very valuable, not only for college, but life skills. The ability to analyze, to critically think, to present that information is really wonderful. And I think both courses do a great job of preparing the student for the rest of their lives.
Fostering the research, argumentation, and communication skills that provide a foundation for college and career success.
So again, I just think that video gives a really good kind of background information about just what the overall goals of the program is. So basically, it would, it would be adding two more classes, which again, are skill-oriented, and that really weaves the, using those skills throughout the other AP courses and students' learning. So the first one is AP Seminar. Of course, both of those, as you heard, were project-based learning courses. So part of what would go into the planning is determining if it would be offered in grade 10 or 11. College Board has done an excellent job in their research and in giving recommendations and what the pros and cons. And so part of, part of implementing this would be to have a year-long, you know, planning. It's not something you just, you know, throw into place, but they offer a lot of suggestions and, you know, depending on your situation and your school's needs of how it might fit. So it is offered either in 10th or 11th, so they don't recommend it beginning in ninth grade, but rather by 10th or 11th. You have to take AP Seminar before you can take AC Research. Of course, we, we learned, you know, through that video and, and through some earlier slides about what the overall goal is. But I think the main one in AP Seminar is looking at choosing and evaluating those complex topics and looking at it through multiple perspective. And I think that word "choose" is so important because student choice, we know that whenever students and, and even adults are given some control and some choice over their learning, that their intrinsic motivation and, and passion for that, that makes them more invested and committed. And the types of AP assessments include, you know, research reports, written arguments, and presentations. So it's a very different type of assessment for those courses too. It's not just sitting down and, and taking maybe a multiple-choice test and some essays as the regular one is, but it's really applying those various skills that students are learning about. Then in AP Research, it's a year-long, in-depth research project. It builds on those AP Seminar skills, again, offered in grades 11 or 12, and that's part of the planning that goes into that. I can say just from original things and knowing, you know, both what the recommendations are and, you know, our current situation, we would probably recommend that in 12th grade. But again, that would be part of the planning committee to really sit and look at that. And again, the AP assessment is based on a student's academic paper, a presentation, and an oral defense. So it's a very rigorous assessment process and for them to show their, their, you know, depth of understanding of that topic. And again, I think when you look at these skills that we're asking students to use, whether, you know, for those of you in education, whether we're talking Bloom's Taxonomy or Webb's Depth of Knowledge, those higher-level thinking skills. And I know, I don't remember who else was on the board from when I was at Lindtown. I know Mary, you were, but when we, we did Genius Projects and we had a group of students come and present to the board, and it's hard to believe that, that, that's a group of juniors right now. But just remember, I just remember the one student, the in-depth thing that he did because he just loved World War II and the planes and everything about. And I never heard that student speak as much in two years at Lindtown is what I heard him say that night. It, it almost reminds me of like a Genius Project on steroids. But again, it fits in to that student choice and that motivation that comes intrinsically from studying a topic and a project that you're passionate about. I thought this was very timely. I was going to go out and look for some examples that students had done and lo and behold, an example came to us. This is from a student at Wilson High School or West Lawn, I think it is in the Wilson School District. And they are in AP Research, so it's a student here in Pennsylvania, and asking if we would participate in his research survey. And he wanted to take a look at how, what school nurses' roles were in developing the policies and protocols to prevent COVID-19 infection rates in public school systems. So talk about timely and relevant and, you know, it's not something that was predetermined by somebody else, but imagine that student going out into, you know, applying for colleges and being able to say that this was the type of work that they had worked on, you know, in their senior year. Even as students are enrolled, having those types of experiences and doing this type of research, I think even, you know, gives them a leg up on when they're ready to do internships and, you know, being leaders in, in their student groups because they had that ability to really go through a rigorous model of doing that. So I just thought that that email was so timely and like, was like, yes, thank you for sending that this week. It couldn't have been more, more perfect for this presentation. So the next slide, this one, I want to highlight, we offer a tremendous amount of AP courses, particularly for our size. There is not any district in our region that offers as many AP course selections. And even when you start to go and look at larger districts, I mean, this is very, I think, robust. And it's something that we've been looking at it each year and we look to see, is there a need? What, what area are we lacking that we don't provide one in? So you can see the various offerings that we currently have. Now, I do have marked, for instance, AP Art History, which is actually under the Social Studies, because our instructor for that is Social Studies certified. It could also fall under art if the art teacher was teaching it, but we have someone that is just so, so qualified for that in our, in our Social Studies department. But we also, so we have AP History and AP Chemistry, based just on enrollment numbers that are offered every other year. Our AP Psychology is done through Apex Online, just because that's been the one, there hasn't really been enough to offer an actual section of it, but there are usually three, four, or five students each year that like to pursue that one. And our newest one that we'll be proposing later is AP Computer Science, which again, especially for some of our students, you know, that are taking some of our, our classes in our, you know, tech ed, such as our computer programming and our introduction to engineering and some of those that will dovetail nicely into this. So right now, the way it exists is, you know, students really, it's, it's kind of a menu that they have to choose from. And there's not always necessarily a cohesive rhyme or reason as to why students are choosing the courses that they do. Now, certainly within the art, and, you know, if you have a student that's very music-oriented that plans to pursue that, that's, that's usually where you see that. But we've talked a little bit before about some of the challenges that we have had with class rank and with grade point average and students just choosing maybe a topic that they have absolutely no intent of pursuing, you know, in, in their college experience, but they want it just for the weight and for the ranking. So, you know, there certainly is value in having as many offerings as we have. And students don't have to do the, the AP Capstone courses, but I think we'll see such a large number choose to do it. Again, just because of the rigor and because it does give more cohesive, they, again, you'll, you'll see a student, you know, again, there'll be some overlap. For instance, most college, students that are college-bound, you're going to see AP Lang and Composition. You know, we always recommend that for any of our, our college-bound students to take. But you might see somebody that is more math and science-oriented than expanding upon those and, and students who are more literature, social studies, or whatever combination. We've added AP Spanish. This is the first year for that. So we really have a robust offering, but what we don't have that the AP Capstone provides is kind of that purposeful cohesion and weaving those courses together, so that it's not so much of content of isolation, but how you apply those skills in those follow-up classes. So to give you a sample of what it looks like, so students can earn either an AP Seminar and Research Certificate, or they could go for a full AP Capstone Diploma. Or, as I was just saying, a student does not need to take AP Seminar and Caps and Research. They could still continue to just choose individual courses. But if they do the AP Seminar in the first year, followed by the, the AP Capstone, if they take those two courses, they will get a special certificate that they have completed the seminar and, and research courses. Now, a caveat I had to throw out is that they must score a three or higher on the assessments for that. To be able to graduate with the AP Capstone Diploma, they also will have needed to have taken four other AP courses and exams throughout their high school career, again, with a score of three or higher. And we do have students that are doing this now, as we do each year with our AP, you know, the, the AP Scholar, distinguished honors, scholars and things. But just the level that this adds with adding the, the research and the, the seminar courses to it, again, just helps to strengthen a student's overall experience, provide that rigor and those higher-level skills that we want. And, you know, in addition to, you know, one of the things that we have talked about as a challenge is that we offer you know, in addition to, you know, one of the things that we have talked about as a challenge is that we often don't see students sitting for AP, the AP Test. So students can certainly, you know, if they pass that test, they can save, you know, money and possibly not have to take a, you know, an introductory course when they're in college, so it could be a cost-saving. They might be able to add another minor in. They might be able to graduate early. But right now, there's really no incentive for students other than that, that they're not kind of directly seeing themselves, because sometimes students, until they're actually in college, they're not recognizing that. It's more us as the adults, as the teachers, administrators, and parents that are, that are pointing out those, those. So this kind of gives them something tangible to show too, and, and makes them much, you know, very desirable as they're applying through the college, the college process. So when we look at a timeline for that, the first thing we would need to do is apply to be an AP Capstone Program. And then we would look at setting up the planning committee, and we have already started, as I said, I met with the AP teachers of looking at resources. And then, once we applied and had approval, then we would really go into that school planning format committee with, you know, what the format would be, what's the teacher selection in terms of, because again, there are multiple, multiple options with how you go about staffing it. Of course, teacher training, anytime we have an AP Course, we want to have that, that teacher be trained in AP, but particularly in Capstone, the Capstone Program, because it's, you know, really honing in on those higher level skills. There would be teacher training. You know, there absolutely is going to need time to be spent building the master schedule to incorporate those two courses in and staffing, and of course, we need to have student and parent educational sessions. And while that school planning committee certainly, you know, the, the teacher selection and things like that would be, you know, truly from, you know, administrative and teachers standpoint, I think in terms of talking about the format that, and things, I think that definitely is something where we can pull in some student voice, both students, you know, currently that are enrolled, but also some students that, you know, have been recent graduates, you know, kind of of that format that they, they think would have worked, because again, I think it's important to have somebody that kind of knows what junior year looks like or senior year looks like, to be able to give that perspective. So that would, that would take place the majority of next year, and then the fall of twenty-two, which would be this year's eighth graders. If we started it in the tenth grade year, that would be the year that AP Seminars started, and then the next year would be the role, the roll-in of AP Research. So again, just making some comparison with international baccalaureate or IB schools and AP. International Baccalaureate, first, in a, in a school district that is our size, there are some larger districts that do both. There's, there, we simply don't have the size to do both types of programs. And if we went to an IB, International Baccalaureate Program, there's going to be a very large fundamental shift in just in all of our courses that we, we would have to look at, but even if we were just kind of looking at what it would take to implement, every year, there are annual fees that total about eleven, twelve thousand dollars just to be a part of that, just to apply to be considered to be an IB School. There's a four thousand dollar application fee. There is a longer timeline. You're not, you know, you have no idea really if you're going to be selected or not, and we would easily be looking at training over twenty thousand dollars for our staff members for that. From the student end, there is a test. You have to first register to take the test, which is one hundred and seventy-two dollars per course, and then for the test itself, there's a fee of one hundred and nineteen dollars per test. By comparison with the AP Capstone, there is no application fee and no annual dues. So that kind of fifteen thousand dollars right off the bat, that, that just to apply and annual dues that is needed for IB Schools, their program is not something that has to be factored in. Now, the training, as I mentioned, we do go about making sure that we train and, and try to do refresher courses for our teachers who are currently teaching AP Courses, but we definitely want it to have that specific AP Seminar and AP Research trained. And, and that, I put an estimate in for that. We're going to want to have about three to five individuals trained, depending upon what format we came and, and how we set the program up. I also don't know how, how the training might be affected, because currently, we're seeing a lot more places offering virtual sessions, and so on top, you know, when we look at, you know, room and board or where they're located and things like that, we might have the ability to be able to actually do some of that virtually now, which we didn't have before for that. And then you see the difference with the registration. First, there isn't a registration fee. You do see an exam fee of ninety-five for a regular and one hundred forty-three for the, the Capstone, whether it's the test or whether it's people that are scoring, you know, written reports and, and things like that. We do offer financial assistance for that, so we do have a fund. And again, I think as we've looked at, you know, different ways to make students, you know, take, be wanting to sit for those tests, even though, you know, we can, we offer that sliding scale of assistance, you know, for some of our, our lower income families. Again, you know, saying that you're spending ninety-five dollars, you know, or one hundred and forty-three for the test, I think that, that one of the things that we need to examine is if a student is taking multiple tests, that, that turns into quite a, quite a chunk of change, and being able to also help with the cost of that. As I said, we do have a pretty robust fund for that, that we can help offset some of, some of that course, course cost for that or testing cost for that. So that is just an overview, again, of it. As you can tell, I'm pretty excited about this. I think that just there are so many opportunities for us to increase our rigor, for us to increase the, the knowledge and the preparedness for our students when they go into college or the, college or the workforce, whichever comes next for them. I just think that, you know, there are some real opportunities here, and to see the, some staff members of, you know, are, like I said, with the AP teachers, to see them coming and asking me things, you know, follow-up questions about it, because they're excited about it. It, it's just really nice, especially in this year where so much has been focused on the right now, as it's had to be because of COVID and everything we've had to make sure, do to make sure that just learning takes place safely. It's very exciting to be able to look ahead at the possibilities that are in our future. So at this time, I would entertain any questions, and I just want to thank you again for the opportunity to share this. And John, I, if you want to go ahead and take the screen back.
Paula, I have two really quick questions. One is, what are the rules for who would form the Defense Committee? Do you have to have a certain number of teachers trained for that, in that area?
That is part of that, and that's why, again, you know, you, you're not going to just, if you have two courses, you're not going to just have, you know, the two people that are sitting on that. So there is, you know, a set, a set number, which again, it depends, is going to depend on how we structure it, because we can, we can structure it in multiple ways. Certainly, the, the two teachers who are teaching the courses, as well as, I really see our, our librarian, our media specialist, especially with everything with research from the library, and, and again, of looking at, depending on what content the teachers that we ultimately decide to select, of making sure that if you have a student, someone outside of that content area, you're going to want to make sure that you pull people in that have knowledge of that content area, and they also would need to be able to, to have that assessment. So we have now for our graduation projects, we have a committee, usually it's a committee of three that sit in and hear a student's, you know, kind of defense of their, not a defense, but an explanation and an overview. This is going to be a much more rigorous process, and likewise, as you mentioned, they, they need to be, you know, it, it needs to have that inner rate of reliability, and they need to be trained on the specific skills that they're evaluating.
So do we have three to five teachers interested in this training and in offering?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Question and a comment. I think this is really exciting. I think it sounds like a wonderful way to, to let kids choose what they're interested in and, and add some rigor. It sounds like a wonderful program. And so my, my comment is, I just want to pick up on what you were saying about providing financial assistance, and I would hope that part of the planning process can be finding a way to make sure that any student who wants to do this receives whatever financial assistance
Absolutely.
they need. We don't want to create a situation where only the students who can afford to take the tests get diploma. I assume we're probably all on the same page about that. And then I was also pleased to see that you're going to do the educational sessions for the students and the parents, thinking about what, what most students take in the tenth grade year, and I'm not seeing a lot of wiggle room in the schedule. And so I'm thinking right there, as you presented it, the idea is that they would choose these courses perhaps over other APs that they don't feel passionate about the subject area, perhaps.
Exactly.
But as you're aware, there's going to be a learning curve there for the, for this, for the students and their parents, as they realize, oh, maybe I don't actually have to take this science class. This seminar would be a better opportunity.
Yeah. So I think that absolutely, you know, that, that educational component of it, this gives them an option, whereas before, they may not have an option, and you know, also taking place at the same time, one of the things that we very much want to look at is, we want to look at, you know, our sequencing of our courses. We want to look, just because something is in the tenth grade right now, that's a requirement, doesn't mean that it has to stay in the tenth grade as a requirement. As we look at the next generation science standards and pulling in that information and really making sure just curricularly that we're aligned in all areas with the standards, I think you're going to see some movement just in general of when things, you know, you might remember from last year that we changed the finance and the, you know, the careers and kind of split those up because of students saying, we really need this later where we have something, you know, to tie it to. I think we, we absolutely, you know, need to look and be creative, and and again, I think just, this is a great way for, as you pointed out, for students, if they're not really passionate about the topic and they're just taking it for the rigor, here's a way that we can give you the rigor, but you choose the topic.
Thanks.
Paula, thank you very much for the presentation. At this point, we'll move into the Board of Action under New Business. The first item is the 2021-22 CSIU Proposed Operating Budget. Dr. Polenchak or Ms. Stanton, if there's anything, I know this was before the Board before, but if there's anything that you guys would like to introduce?
Dr. Polenchak, I don't know if there was something that you wanted to say. It does walk through really clearly on the Talking Points Document, what it, what the, what is being proposed, so.
Is there a motion to approve the CSIU General Operating Budget as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Browse, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Paula.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fasera?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Browse?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, then the next item, the 2021-22 Organizational Chart. I will let Dr. Polenchak speak if she wants to. I know that in discussions with her, I would look to possibly table this again. I know there's some, some ongoing changes. And again, Dr. Polenchak, if you want to speak to those, but I would look for a motion to table that item again. Dr. Polenchak, any, any more explanation?
Yes, thank you. As we're evaluating tomorrow morning with Class IU, our technology infrastructure, there may be some recommendations that come from those individuals there for our consideration, so we just ask for a little bit more time to hear what they have to say and make them better informed.
Motion to table?
Second.
So a motion to table the item moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion? All in favor of tabling, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We'll move on to the Board of Action under New Business, the Policies for First Reading. Again, Dr. Polenchak, Dr. Zimmerman, Dr. Jablonsky, anything you guys want to highlight there?
I'll just make people aware, sorry, that we're, we're very studiously moving through lots of policies and getting them up to date, so that's why you've been seeing a lot more policies than you might be used to.
Dr. Zimmerman, do you want to make a motion to approve?
I'll say a move that, move that we approve these policies for first reading.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Zimmerman, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky. Any discussion? I can do this by voice vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item, the Memorandum of Agreement with LAEA. Dr. Polenchak?
All right. This is an MOU that is similar to what we had approved in the winter and the spring. If for some reason, our sports season is complicated because of COVID-19, then the coaches will be relegated for their work performance.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please, Paula?
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fasera?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Browse?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, the next item, again, is a memorandum of agreement with LAEA. Dr. Polenchak?
So Section 29.123 of the Collective Bargaining Agreement states that we would consider a coaching candidate who has two years of high school, or high school coaching experience to be placed at a certain level on the salary scale for the stipend. LAEA, and we agree that we would consider coaching experience at the collegiate level to count the same as high school experience. It just wasn't something that was contemplated at the at the time of the development of the collective bargaining.
So moved?
Second.
Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Mrs. Brousse. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Paula.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fessero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Motion carry.
And then our last item under New Business is the employee 2020-3, the MOU. Back to you, Dr. Polenchak.
This is an employee who's asking for consideration. The employee was already on FMLA leave. The Board did approve the MOU regarding how we address FMLA leave with compensation and benefits. Since this person's leave had begun and also was approved before the MOU, this individual is asking for consideration in just the areas of, I believe it's dental and, I believe it's life and disability insurance.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Ms. Stanton. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Paula.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fessero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Motion carry.
All right, moving on to Board Information. I am going to skip the President's Report this evening. Dr. Polenchak, I'll turn it over to you for the Superintendent's Report.
We want to make sure that we're welcoming back our East Coast students who are returning to in-person instruction in the second semester of the year. Principal teachers, guidance, counselors, if you're looking at the students and the families to ensure that they have a smooth transition back. As we look to next school year and the potential for more students to come back and still live with their students, we will begin our outreach to students and families to answer their questions and provide support. The district is moving ahead with its testing, although it is uncertain if the rework of the 2020-21 school year will come from the United States Department of Education. So far, they've provided us with some guidance on truncating tests or even extending the testing window. The Pennsylvania Department of Education has a draft letter that they are submitting to ask that the testing window be extended to September 2021. We believe that since our students have been in-person for instruction throughout most of this school year, that it would be beneficial for the students to take that assessment. And that would be the PSSA and the Keystone's in the spring in, at the regular window at the end of the spring this school year, so that we're not beginning the school year next year with the learning loss that could occur over the summer and welcoming back the students to a PSSA test or a Keystone test. As February starts to come to a close, we're also starting to plan for whatever spring activities that we can do safely and that our students can have to have a normative experience in school. We really know we can't promise anything because so much is out of our control with where the virus goes and community spread, as well as any of the orders coming from the governor. But we're going to begin the process of thinking creatively, starting to work collaboratively and listening to what our students and families desire, as well as what they're comfortable with. And finally, we do want to thank all of the families, students and parents over the past couple of weeks with this winter weather. We've opted to use remote instruction days instead of snow days, which would have added to our calendar at the end of the year, taking us well into mid and late June. And we certainly acknowledge that for our elementary families, the experience of a remote learning day is a bit more challenging than it is for our secondary students. And we're continuing to evaluate how this has worked this year as we think about the flexible instruction day for weather emergencies that we can apply for to PDE to see if this is something that's viable or our students, are we able to operate that remote instruction? And is it conducive to our community? So let's just look forward to the end of the winter and a mild spring. Thank you.
Jordan, you're muted.
Thanks. I haven't done that in a while. We'll move on to Board Liaison and Committee Reports. Is there anything that anybody would like to report back to the Board?
We had an IU meeting last week, and I was really struck by a video that Dr. Burkle shared about the healthcare pathways and just showed all the different ways that the IU supports careers in healthcare, that I got all inspired and forwarded that to folks in the high school. So thank you for responding to that. And they're also sharing with guidance. I just thought, this is great. And I think that if, you know, people are not always aware of the different opportunities that the IU offers our students.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Any other reports? We will then move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that anybody would like to have removed and voted upon separately? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the revised personnel report?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Zimmerman, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fessero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse? Mrs. Brousse? Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Motion carry.
All right, we'll move on to Director's comments. I'll just open the floor. If there's anybody who would like to make a comment, I'll just open up the floor now.
Well, I'm super excited about the AP Capstone. So thanks so much for sharing that, Paula. I was interested in learning more about the International Baccalaureate, and this makes a ton more sense, I think, for us. And I'm just excited to hear about, it's exciting to hear principals be excited about seeing their kids and about the things that they're doing. It's just, it's nice to hear that in all your voices. So thank you so much for all the work you're doing.
Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to any citizens' comments to the Board on non-agenda items. John, do we have any comments to the Board?
I'll take a look here. And we don't currently have any through the survey, but I do know Mr. Farren from the Standard Journal is on the line and has requested to ask some questions. So, Mr. Farren, go ahead.
Hi, hi, everybody. Good evening. I hope you're doing well. Thank you, thank you for taking my call. Thank you for taking my questions this evening. First, just a request, if Principal Reber or someone from the high school could just get in touch with me at the Standard Journal, as soon as you make a decision regarding some sort of, you know, spring musical performance, it would be most appreciated. We certainly would like to preview it in our publication. Otherwise, I have just a general question about the Education Committee as proposed, and then a couple of things, I just want to make sure I heard correctly. This would be for Jordan or, and/or Dr. Polenchak. My editor is going to want to know why it was formed. I mean, was there, was there a trend, some vibe in the community, something you're hearing, something people are telling you about the district, about education in it, and so on and so forth, about, well, whatever their reason was. Did you catch anything like that at the beginning of this?
I can answer that, Matt, by saying that there wasn't one specific thing. This is really an opportunity for the administration to work more hand in glove with school directors who are representing the community to make sure that we're providing the best education that we can to our students. So we would be exploring ways that we can be trendsetters and we can even take our kids beyond what the expectations are right now for the 21st century.
All righty. Jordan, care to add anything?
No, I think she said it well. I guess I would just say, you know, and this is something I stated earlier. I think it just gives the Board an opportunity to really dive a little bit deeper, or members of the Board to dive a little bit deeper into some of these topics that we really, you know, without having five, six, seven-hour board meetings every time, you know, it's just, it's not feasible for the entire Board to really jump into it. So I'm excited because I think it will give certain members of the Board that ability and then to come back and give the Board, you know, a brief synopsis and a kind of an overview, which is something that we're not currently doing. So, you know, that, that experience, I think, will benefit every Board member.
Okay, certainly, thank you. A couple of things I want to make sure I heard correctly. Community stakeholders would include parents? Because I heard principal, staff, less than five directors and so on. Would they be, would they have an input means, shall we say?
We did speak about that. We don't know the number or the way in which they would be selected. Would they be appointed after expressing an interest or tapped on the shoulder to join? That's something that once we have school directors who are appointed to this committee itself, that's going to be their first charge is to flesh out what we had discussed today.
Certainly, certainly. Similarly, would the committee have any, any say or word on more curricular specifics such as textbooks? Or would that, would that depend?
Through this discussion this evening, we steered away from getting into the granular elements of what the practice is. This is really to explore what would be best and how would we go about implementing that as opposed to analyzing every single thing that's happening in the school district. Currently have teachers who diligently look at a variety of texts and make their decision. And the Board has faith in the professionalism of both teachers to recommend textbooks for approval. And not to speak for the Board, but from that discussion, you know, that's something that's very positive. We don't see that in all school districts across the Commonwealth. So that, you know, we would probably be steering clear from that.
Okay. I did hear correctly, however, you would meet in, or the committee would meet in the fall, spring, or as needed?
Yes.
Yes, okay, okay. Just want to make sure I heard it correctly. All right, well, thank you, everyone. That's all I have for this evening. Thanks so much.
Matt?
Yeah.
I, I just sent you an email with the information about the musical, as well as the Director's email address, so that you can contact her directly.
All right, well, thank you, Paula.
You're welcome.
That's all I have this evening. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Matt. Any other citizens' comments?
Not that I can see.
Okay. Then hearing none, we'll move on to adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Zimmerman, seconded by Dr. Unziger Fessero. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, everyone.